Okay, then we will call an order. The Monday, November 9, 2015, regular meeting with the town's principal and board of commissioners. And begin with the rest of the public silence.
Thank you.
Mr. Farrell, would you please start the list?
When everyone rise, we place you.
To the line of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, the mission of God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business would be to approve the consent agenda, which we have three items tonight. The minutes from October 26th, a supplemental sidewalk agreement for our project on State Road 1967, and the board of commissioners' schedule for 2016. Any changes to the consent agenda, any additions? Anybody like to point out any of those items? No, your motion to approve?
Chairman, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If not opposed, the consent agenda is approved. And next we'll approve the regular agenda, which we have, let's see, one item of whole business is that if you just need some closed session, any additions, deletions, changes to the regular agenda. If not, then I, your motion to approve.
So did I move? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If not opposed, the agenda is approved. Next order of business is citizen matter. We have one citizen who has signed up. Catherine Dinegar, please state your address for the record.
My address is 124 Goldberry Lane, Pittsburgh. Well, good evening. It's been about a month since I came in front of you guys and we talked about the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee's recommendation from the Tree Protection Ordinance and the Natural Resource Conservation Ordinance at the work session. And at the end of that work session, you guys indicated that you thought that the recommendation should be included by your consultant in the UDO process. And also you discussed asking the town staff to investigate putting together a natural resource board that could be used to review development proposals prior to staff review and possibly also to be used as a tree board. So my understanding is that neither of these next steps were actually officially endorsed by the board. You talked about wanting to wait until Ms. Baldwin was present. You had left a little early before kind of officially accepting them. And so I wanted to just frame it up again this evening so you could move forward. Unfortunately, it looks like Beth is not, not here. So maybe I'm just here to remind you.
Okay. So we'll refer that to the manager. If indeed we need resolutions to achieve what you're suggesting, perhaps you can ask the manager to make a judgmental call on that and if it's necessary, put it on a future agenda.
Okay. So like actually write up a resolution and then you could vote on it?
Sounds like that's what you were asking the citizen.
Yeah, 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 that sounds like a good.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Review of Town Infrastructure Construction Standards through Town Engineering Bureau of Oil. You are the main act tonight, sir.
Thanks. So if the feedback keeps happening, you can just turn me off. Wish it was that simple. Don't you need a noise ordinance? So, good evening. Tonight, I'll just briefly introduce kind of the packet of revised and new specifications and standard details in draft format. They, it's been kind of a long time coming. We've been putting a lot of these, this language aside for months because of the, kind of the back burner nature of these issues. But now that we've brought forward, I think the catalyst to bring this forward today or tonight is the reclaim water section, which is vital to get that pretty much final, given the speed and nature and critical issues surrounding purple pipe going in the ground in what's going to be town right of way, in the Chatham Park Development particularly. So that pipe is actually in the ground today. We did not have, do not have approved reclaim water specifications. We have made it to this point by using and editing the town of Cary reclaim water specifications and standard details and looking at a few other jurisdictions such as Durham and Owassa, Orange Water and Sewer Authority. So now we've been able to sort of catch up cart before the horse. Now the horse is coming around in front of the cart, so to speak, and we're, so we've got, we've got basically a new section called reclaim water, which is section six, I believe. Yes. And another brand new section called Public Infrastructure Acceptance Procedures that is, has also been on the back burner for a while. That document describes warranties and how the town reviews what's going to be public infrastructure in terms of warranty period, final acceptance procedures, financial guarantee issues, et cetera. I will point out that I have not discussed this or received final comments from the town manager, the town attorney, or the town finance director, which I assume is going to happen at some point in the near future, which is why I, one of the recommendations tonight is to allow the manager with a little flexibility to make administrative edits, changes, what have you, assuming that this, the board approves these specifications tonight so that the manager can move forward and finalize these documents without coming back one more time. So we can get them finalized and then we'll go through the process of formatting, text review one more time, you know, really look into these documents and then taking the entire town spec, kind of modernizing it and then putting back on the website. That's the goal over the next 30 days or so, 60 days maximum, to get this back out there on the web. The goal, the goal of all of this is to basically help the town of Pittsburgh with, protect the town of Pittsburgh from harm and new infrastructure as is placed on town property. There's a lot of details associated with these documents and I'm going to do my best to refrain from going over every, every detail, but I'll be happy to answer questions the best I can. Michelle Meyer is here to answer any technical questions I can't get to in a hurry. The, the other piece is the revised sections, which goes back to, I guess, when were the first specifications written? I don't know, is it 2000, is it 1997? I'm not sure. But we actually spent time reading over every word of the original existing specifications to ask ourselves, is this still accurate? Is this still correct? Do we want to add to it? And we found a lot of cases that we did have to correct it, we did have to add to it to meet standard engineering practices and standard practices for everything from ductile iron pipe to how you build a trench properly to inspection procedures. We've, we've not had this kind of growth, so we've not had the need to really have a more efficient and accurate way to look at how we improve infrastructure. We have daily calls from contractors and developers about how do, how do we get things done? And then when there's issues going on in the field, how do we prove or disprove or show the contractor that this is how you need to do it? It's written right here. So with Michelle's help, she's really been very helpful in the last 60 days or so. Have you been here 60 days?
I've been.
So she's been very helpful and her experience in the field thus far has been very beneficial to the town in learning the way we could change a few things. So those issues are in here as well. And it also goes to the section one, which is more of a planning department slash front door issues of how you come in the door with plans, how, how many sets of plans do you bring? How's that process work? So I haven't spoken to Jeff in detail about that section, but we've spoke a little bit and there may be some need to modify that piece just a little, once we really look at it in more detail. But, so the standards go from the beginning to the end. The other critical piece is the standard details. So we've, we've taken what we believe to be the best of the best of what the town could, would need. It's in a single PDF in your packet. It's multiple sheets. This packet is under construction. It's nowhere, I would say nowhere near complete, but it is, it is incomplete. It's in draft form. It's in less complete form than the specifications. But this is the idea where we're heading and we're going to need to clean these up. Obviously, we're going to need to put them in AutoCAD and make the town logo correct and the, make sure all the language is correct and for what we would like, and they need to match the specifications. But it's again the starting point and we have more work to do in the detail arena, I believe, than the specification arena. So the other piece to your packet was these tables of comparing the existing specification with the proposed or recommended specifications and it, it's in table form, tabular form, spreadsheet type format where we describe in more detail what we've done. For as example, we threw out the documents, it used to be called the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources, DNR, and we changed that to North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. We've changed a lot of things related to what town staff does what. The town engineer, the public utilities director, the town inspector, the town manager. So there's references to staff positions throughout this that we changed. We cited the storm water procedures, the storm water ordinance. That's a change. So there's been some water, water meter, water pipe, water materials type of changes as well. Another one that's interesting is this, what's called a polyethylene wrap. The ductile iron folks suggest using this polyethylene wrapper on ductile iron whenever you have corrosive soil so you don't get deteriorated pipe in less than 50 years. It's a, but we decided we're not going to just require it just because it sounds like a good idea. We're, we're going to require it if there's sufficient corrosive nature in the soil that would require it. That's a, that's a large area of spec that we've added to this. But, and so John Patine, in case you're wondering, has been reading through this as well. We've been meeting with him on and off to get his buy-in or his ideas. So this hasn't been done in a vacuum. But like I said, further staff have to review some of these items and give their final okay or comment on it. We kind of pulled this together fairly quickly in the last couple of weeks, so it sort of sped up. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and myself or Michelle or maybe someone else could help, depending on your questions. So thank you.
Let me just ask a general question to, while other folks are thinking about the specifics. But as I understand, what you're asking us to do here is, as a matter of policy, I guess the board would say that yes, we want the staff to create such a technical manual and that we should have such a technical manual, which you presented us here as a, as a, what we call it, a 90% completed document. And I like your suggestion at the end here that in the future, since it is a technical manual and most of us on the staff, the board are not technical people, I think it's appropriate your suggestion to have the staff under the supervision of the manager make future adjustments and changes to it. So you're asking us tonight to approve the concept of having a technical manual for the use of the technical staff and contractors working in the, working in the jurisdiction. And you're also asking for permission to keep working on it and refining it into the form where it's considered 100% complete.
Yeah, that's correct. So currently, the standard specs are in existence today. So we're, we're asking that we modify them so that they read closer to these and that we don't, we don't come back to the board for a final approval before we can literally publish them. So with minor revision, we, we're there. I'd say we're more like 95% there.
Okay. Well, I don't know, I can't speak for the whole board, but that would satisfy me if you would just come back and tell us when you got it done, rather than come back for a final approval. So we know that the work is completed. So, okay. So I, I think I understand what you're asking us to do then, sir. Any questions?
I don't have any question, maybe just a suggestion. After going through these several pages and going back to the revisions, Fred, is there any possibility that any revisions that come from the, from this first section to the revision, could that be in bold or have asterisk cited? Because it is, to read the revisions and go back to find them from the first section is fairly confusing and backtracking a lot. If we could just have the revisions in bold or any type of asterisk?
Yes.
Instead of reading two pages twice?
Yeah. And I apologize for the, the way it is confusing that way. We, I guess we decided to not show track changes to try to keep it clean so we'd see what the final product looked like. So we did go back at the manager's request and made these tables where you could compare the two. But we didn't physically show and track changes, which we could have done in hindsight, we probably should have done, we just didn't.
I love that. I think that's really helpful. If you do show the track changes, we know not only what was added, but what was?
Right.
Deleted, which is really quite helpful.
Right. And that, like I said, that was a kind of an afterthought. We didn't realize how many changes we were going to actually make when we started this endeavor. And then we got into it and we realized, wow. So.
Well, I do have some comments that I'll add to staff's consideration. So section one, I guess, now that I know it's for planning its use also, it explains some of the items that are included, such as planting plans and sediment, well, it doesn't really explain sedimentation and erosion control because I think we're relying on the county to help us with that. So I don't know why we would want, would we review those plans?
Not necessarily.
So I don't think, so I think G on page two could probably be mistaken. But it does say planting plans and schedules, which I always think of as kind of a planning kind of side of the approval. And so if it says for planning, then it probably needs to embellish a lot more of the items that planning's going to want to review. But given there's already been a site plan approval, probably the technical issues as far as zoning compliance have been addressed. So I'll leave that to you guys to work that out. I think items K and L in plan review are referring specifically to home stations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're not talking about showing wiring diagrams for site lighting?
No, this was, this is in your language in the original spec, but, but yeah, I believe it, it was geared for list stations.
Okay. Are we requiring plan and profile for storm drainage, for private storm drainage systems or just public?
Just public, but we do require plan and profile for all water, private and sewer. So we know there's no conflict. But not, we're not requiring private sewer profiles specifically.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm wondering if this could use some clarification because it just says storm sewers in general?
That would be?
E. E, yeah. Page two.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so that is in there.
Yeah. On page three, you talk about the importance of modeling the water system. On item five, and are we providing the engineers with any of our modeling data for them to utilize?
We have, upon request.
Upon request? Okay.
I couldn't make that clear here, could I?
I think most are probably looking for that. Yeah, I hope they're not making a Pittsburgh system.
We also wanted to make it clear while you're there that the fire flow model is not a town per view, it's county fire marshal. And that's become an issue before. So we're, I was trying to be clear that we're providing a model for adequate water supply, period, and that fire flow is totally on them to work with the county fire marshal. And that's a different modeling, you know, the sprinkler models and what have you. So.
Item nine, construction submittals. I think we're asking the contractor prior to beginning construction to make submittals to the town for review and approval. And I'm not used to seeing it done that way. Usually the design engineer is reviewing and approving those submittals and the inspector in the field is making sure that the specs are being followed. So I don't know if it makes sense to have the town actually do that work and do we have the fees to cover that kind of effort? I know it's surely going to result in a slowdown and there's going to be lots of complaints. I think it's unusual.
Are you in under number eight?
No, nine, construction submittals. Shop drawings.
Page five, right. Five of six. You're in the revision.
Revised, effective December 2015. Yeah, page five.
Page five.
Page five, I'm glad.
Yeah.
Could you repeat your?
Yeah, I just think it's a lot of work for staff. One, I think we're going to, I don't know that we've got the fees to cover it. Two, I think it's unusual, not, it's not usually done by municipalities in this fashion because I think you basically rely on the inspector in the field to notice what valves going in the ground, what pipes going in the ground and them to make a call at that time, whether or not it meets our specs and standards. And given the fact that we're suggesting after construction plans are approved, specifications are approved, now give us the shop drawings before you can start construction is going to lead to a lot of consternation, I think, because I don't think the industry is used to the towns doing that level of review.
The only time I've seen that level of review is when the town is the owner, also the owner of the project.
Right.
Then you would get all the submittals. So what, what would be the purpose of having it in town, just to catch problems earlier so that you don't have to?
That was a part of the original specification. We did not add that.
So that came?
That was already in, from the 1997 or 2007 submittal, or specification that was approved by council at that time.
Have we been doing it?
Yes, we have.
Been getting some?
And then Fred and I have been working out here lately. But it is a part of the original specification. If you guys want to take it out, we can.
I would not, I think it's unnecessary.
But, and Mr. Carey does approve the point that we could leave it and just make it as part of a capital approval. That's generally where I've seen it in the past, is capital.
Yeah, yeah. The town is building a, the town hollers, we'll be told, you get all the submittals.
We could certainly do that.
I don't think it's a big deal for the contractor. They're submitting them all anyway, just making with a copy of the downwater. Here, what Commissioner Gilgo is saying is, submittals usually come from the construction contractor to the owner to make sure that they match up with the designer's intent. And I guess the only reason we could handle this is if we thought that we wanted to short stop the possibility that whatever they, whatever they specified in the submittal didn't need, the towns would save them some time and money to, without having to go back.
Okay, we can adjust that.
Talks about proof of testing and the owner's house submittal required forms and documents. Do we have a list of those forms? Do we have those forms? I was looking for them on the web and didn't find them.
Item 10?
Yeah.
On page?
Five.
Strange, I don't have an item 10.
You have an item 10.
It's project closeout, final acceptance.
I'm sorry, what was your question about that?
It makes mention of providing proof of testing on required forms and documents. And I was just looking for those forms and documents on the web. I didn't find them, so I'm wondering, do we have them and that we just don't have them published?
Anything about that?
Can we pull, if I see her? Sorry.
It's the, kind of like what we talked about the name of the back tea test.
Those are generally published by, in this case, the geotechnical firms are supplying those or, and/or the water testing. And then I am currently working on town water and sewer testing results, forms. I just haven't got to that point. And then we also have some other forms that we're working on for ASBIL review and whatnot. So we're, there's kind of a work in the process. But a lot of our stuff is coming from the outside, i.e. geotechnical or the bacterial results.
Yeah. And that's what I'm used to. I was just, was wondering if there were additional forms that people need to be aware of by, you know, read something that says all required forms?
Forms, yeah. What does that mean?
Okay, tell me what's required.
We could be, we could be clear. Today I just reviewed a water, a back tea test result from a lab. That's an example of what we're.
Right, they're just going to tell you the results and it's going to meet the specifications.
In a certain format and, yeah.
Okay. The record drawings and I think that's, that one's kind of a tough one because I've seen long, long lists and very detailed requirements for what the ASBILs need to be. And right now it's kind of like, provide the ASBILs. Well, it seems like I probably need to go to the next step and get that list or else you're going to be saying to some engineer, this isn't enough, this isn't enough. And they, they're going to be constantly saying, well, what is it you need? What do you want?
That document is on my desk.
Got it.
It's not part of this package, but we're tweaking it as we speak, and it, and it's lengthy. And so I'm trying to figure out ways to not, to make it a little less lengthy, because it, you know...
And all these requirements are gonna be provided electronically as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll have to say that I did not review section two. I went, I looked through the proposed changes, and I think the section, changes for section two that were published were actually for section one. And I just, I gave up. But I don't think that's a problem.
We'll gladly take comments over the next several weeks, if you see anything that raises your eyebrows or needs attention.
Okay. Seems I've got a comment, I've got a general grammatical issue for number four. And let me just tell you that real quick.
Section four?
Yeah, H flushing. Says flush water shall be removed at a downstream manual and removed from the system. Four, one, H. Yeah, I think it is H, it's H. Eight, eleven.
That's, um...
Two, H.
So there's two, three sentences there.
Yeah, just the one sentence, kind of. Come over someone, wouldn't take anything to clean it up.
Okay.
Back to section three, one item that you had mentioned about the wrap. The ductal iron pipe wrap.
Right.
So it says that the town will determine on a case-by-case basis if the wrap is required. So we're gonna be in the field, are we doing soil testing, or getting the geodeck to do that?
Okay. That's another detail. Typical soil tests don't usually talk about corrosivity, but we're gonna do some, a little bit of research to figure out what's a typical geotech method. To establish, is it quantitative or qualitative, or is it based on type of soil, or is it actual number? The research suggests it's a lot of things, pH. So we're gonna drill into that a little bit deeper and make sure the geotech piece is kind of standard. We just don't want to require the wrap, even though the ductal iron association recommends it as a precaution.
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned about just requiring it without knowing what kind of soil is going to be up against.
I think the only other comment I've got is section seven. The third paragraph of item A during the warranty period.
Third paragraph?
Yeah, yeah, about the third sentence, I think, says that during the warranty period, the town will perform routine maintenance. And I'm just wondering, what kind of routine maintenance will the town be responsible for if we haven't accepted the roadway yet?
That's an excellent question. I'll review that.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for the board comments? So what's our, what's the, what's our cover level with approving this at its 95% state sure? Are we comfortable doing that, or would we ask the town engineer and other ones to provide it, bring it back at 100%?
Comfortable with moving forward as is?
Somebody in order to state that, the staff recommendation is to approve the proposed new reclaim water specification, standard details. New infrastructure acceptance policy revised specifications. Also recommend that the POC authorize the owner to make administrative changes to these documents and finalize them without further POC review approval. We want to make a motion to that effect.
So I move...
Could I just interject before you do that? That with public infrastructure acceptance, the bond requirement is only 125% instead of 150 or 200%. That's the maximum, it makes 125.
So it says 150 in these documents, but that's...
Well, they say you pass the law, so it says maximum is 125.
Okay, I love to fix that.
So that will be one of those smart changes we make. Precisely.
May I sit down here a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
I have.
You opposed? Then we accept the staff's recommendation, this 95% technical man.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, managers update on previous projects.
Thanks, I'll be... Cold weather has kind of affected my voice a little bit, made it lower and quieter than usual, so bear with me, and yeah, I'll try to be brief. The rain is causing some issues for us here locally. I think that people are expecting us to pick up leaves right now, and we like to get out there and do that. Unfortunately, it's rather difficult to scrape leaves off our streets while we have this much rain. So we hope to, we hope to get back on the speed and be caught up on that. And we just ask the folks to bear with our streets and facilities guys, and that, that issue will last resolved shortly. Another thing we'll be coming into here in the near future that Fred and staff have been working on would be the continuation of our infiltration and inflow issues that we've been having at the waste water treatment plant as a result of our collection system taking in storm water. That's certainly been happening here in the last few days. As I believe we've updated a little bit the past, we've completed the testing in various areas. Show you exactly, just a quick map, and Fred has the comments on this. You can see some of the areas on the long tumor, tumor loop road heading down towards the treatment plant. And then up above, up above E Street as well. And I think what we've come up with is a find and fix, and Fred corrected if I'm wrong, but we've come up with a find and fix strategy that is lower than what we had originally budgeted for. And so, we've got a couple, we've got a decision I think we're gonna make in the near, near future. Be to continue with the find and fix that we have that's been identified as a result of the testing to date. Or do we use an extension the state has provided to us until February 1st to come up with additional possible fixes or needs to be fixed situations? Is that accurate?
That's correct. I'll just add a small detail, so this area was our first targeted area that we gave the state for the half a million dollar loan. We found a lot of defects in this area, but it turns out the cost estimate to repair all that is $250,000, and we've got a $450,000 loan. So I essentially asked the state, could we extend our deadline, which was the end of this month, to look in other areas? Since we had $200,000 left on the table, if we so chose to borrow at 0% APR. They agreed to September 1st, or I'm sorry, February 1st. So we met with hydrostructures, and we came up with some other areas in town that we believe warrant more smoke testing, and where we believe the defects are. So we're, I just got a proposal from hydrostructures to do, for, expand the scope, where they're gonna do smoke testing and video work. And once we decide from prioritization where these other additional defects are, they could put together a second package. So we'll have the tumor loop package and area X package together that would be closer to our loan, our proved loan amount. And at that point, we put all that together and send it to the state by February 1st. So in the interim word, figuring out where we believe we want to go. And we also want to do monitoring, because that's kind of the best way to know when it rains, the flows pick up from base flow to rainfall flow with monitors. And that's a slightly different cost piece. The state allowed us up to two monitors. We believe we need about 10 to be really efficient. So we're talking to John Potte, looking at his current budget, how he can possibly help offset the cost of these monitors. They would just go in for a month, 30 days, and we would hopefully capture a couple rainfall events. And that'll help us with knowing which subtributaries this, these defects create inflow and infiltration from. So that's where we are today.
I think, and I think we were initially planning on discussing this issue in a little bit more detail for this meeting. I think we've got a few of these unknowns, you know, for instance, can we use more of these monitors as part of the project? And two, I think I'm not entirely comfortable yet, because I guess with the home piece of the project, because we don't actually have any feedback from the state on how that part is formally structured. And that's kind of an uncertainty, so how much can we charge forward with a lot of this planning? Until we, we actually have some firm ground to stand on in terms of the actual home piece and feedback from the state, how that actually gets formalized. And so we're trying to answer those questions very well. But we'll have, we'll have more on this to come, and certainly again, to come full circle, it's certainly timely with the rain we've been receiving. And I guess, you know, when Fred and I were talking about this in the last couple of weeks, the thought occurs, well, why couldn't we just kind of do this in phases? And other things like what we've identified at this point in time, could we not just start tackling this issue, knowing that we have, knowing that we have a problem? The state wants to see one phase, essentially, and a quick answer to that, you know, they don't want to see this in two phases. So there could be some ground that they give on that, but that's the answer that we receive to this point right now, so. So definitely more to come on that. The Main Street program, I mentioned last week, that, that we'll be looking with, looking to Kinley Horn to move forward some of the design issues that they had identified around the traffic circle as part of discretionary money that was made available by then Secretary Tate up and DOT. As part of the downtown visioning process, and staff, I believe, has a meeting coming up this Thursday with Kinley Horn to kind of start to internalize some of, some of those issues. And then we look forward to bringing that one to, as soon as I think we, we kind of identify what some of the issues are from our end, we look forward to bringing that one out to business owners and allow them to continue to help drive that project. I've also mentioned previous meetings that we'll be looking for some, we've actually been looking for some space for our planning and engineering staff as it has expanded, and probably will expand by one more position in the planning end of things. And we'll look forward to a report, I think, on that in the next meeting or so. As our first space is essentially that ground as we've added, as we've added. And as the town gets busier, and as our needs to keep up with the busyness increases, so does our need for space, obviously. So we'll keep an eye on that, and again, things aren't necessarily improving, even in this building, it's this rain again. As long as we're continuing to just, you know, batter the, this rainfall we've been receiving, we've got a couple leaks in the building here, so. So we're gonna have to track that down as well. That, I believe, is, is all I have.
Okay, I guess it moves us to board member updates. So there is an EDC board meeting in the morning, I'll be attending that. And I invited Mayor Cindy Perry to join me, she's accepted, and we'll be at our EDC board meeting tomorrow. I'll introduce her to the folks that are on that board. And I believe this is, I don't have my calendar with me today, but I think this is also that we could be, join me. Enter Thursday. Okay, so we'll be doing that Thursday night.
This week?
Yeah, Thursday at the Union College. Okay, anything from the RPO?
No.
Fairgrounds. It's for a business association.
No, I think just the manager, Rudy Beck, mentioned about the small town Main Street and the circle improvements. Well, let me mention this, I did get an email from the PBA wanting me to mention some things that are going on. And one of them is the tree lighting ceremony, which is November 22nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Mr. Perry, I understand you will be the dignitary hand hosting, or you've been invited?
November 22nd.
Breaking news to you?
Yeah, I've been on vacation, November 22nd.
Yeah, yeah. The other item they wanted me to mention was December 19th, Santa is on trial, as in from the miracle on Hillsborough Street. And that's going to be at the courthouse, and Judge Bedore will be the judge hearing the case. Uh, December 19th. I don't have the time here, so I'll follow up and shoot everyone an email.
Commissioner Concerns, Mr. Farrell.
Well, I've just had a couple comments regarding the, the Main Street program and the upgrades in the circle. I've had several people commenting regarding, really concerned about how much narrowing the courthouse is gonna be. So I really, before we go making any major plans there, I want us to really look before we go narrowing the circle. That is really a big concern for people, they kind of panicked on this. And that's one thing, before we go tearing up curbing and whatever, you know, the Main Street program's gonna do, we need to, we need to check this thoroughly. Because I'm not for narrowing. Because I'm not going to narrow the courthouse at all.
I have a big problem with that too. Because the way it is now, it's on a turn. You can kind of pull around and, you know, what happens if a car, there's a passenger, maybe they'll pull around and that's my concern, that traffic can come to a standstill if it's too narrow. I have a better sense of what's too narrow.
Yeah.
Because right now there's a flood and you get around other cars.
Well, just a thought going forward, that that's going to be an NCDOT project. So if you have, we have concerns about it, we should address them early because those things tend to, you know, they get a life of their own. And once DOD gets rolling on something, it's hard to, hard to turn around. So if we have concerns we want to express, we better, we should just express them early.
Sometimes people have spoken with me about those same concerns.
Me too.
Narrowing it there, like we've got trucks coming around there and how are the trucks going to manage? They have real concern about that. Now, back to my... you all need to do that.
We're still the money on topic.
But anyway, thank you.
Anything else, sir? No, sir. Mr. Baldwin?
I'm wondering if anyone from staff is attending the meeting in Raleigh tomorrow? Or tuning in at the webinar for the environmental rule interpretation?
Jeff and I are going.
Excellent. Are you going? Fantastic. Okay. Very interested to hear what is to be said. Because I understand not only are they talking about wetlands and buffers, but they're going to talk about Jordan rules too.
Okay.
Just something to mention on that event, just what kind of tree block? This day 11 is, you're going to be walking down, we're going to talk about the trees that they have.
Mr. Baldwin?
No, I don't have that.
Just one quick question on, this has come up before, the final paving and punch listing out at Powell Place. Any progress unknown what they're going to do? Getting into rapidly approaching winter when they can't do anything until spring, so...
Well, they would prefer, I think, to do it by, there's your original timeline that they've given me a few months ago, was by the end of March 2006.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
So there are other punchless things I think they can do between now and then. So I haven't heard of paving for one.
Okay. Yeah, I was assuming that it wasn't going to happen this long, at this length of game.
No, you could... In North Carolina, you can pave if the weather works out. You can catch good weather and pave into December.
Yeah, they've got a great, they've got a great deal of curbing that are marked for cut out replacements. They have, they can do some of that, I suppose. As far as planes close.
Work around the pond and your...
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have. Okay, next item is a closed session pursuant to statute 143, yes, create point 11, a three. We will motion to a closed session.
Okay.
Favor?
I have.
Those are, those are, we're going to close session.
Like I said, we can talk a little bit more about...
If we know what's set, we're worried when it comes, sorry.
I'll just sit there.
All right.
All right, good. Yeah, no problem.